Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's a bunch of public hearings.
I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. It's January 18th, 2018, and the time is 7:08. The first item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge, but first I'd like to apologize that we were a little bit behind tonight, but we'll go ahead and start if you will stand. And Commissioner Lucas will be leading us in prayer.
If you bow your heads. Durla, we just thank you for this night, God. We just ask that you be with us during this time as we make decisions that are in the best interest of this city. I pray that you be with each of us as commissioners and the vice mayor and the mayor tonight as we make those decisions. Bless each citizen that is here and not here tonight, God, and be with us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, we forgot roll call.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. We'll start out with Commissioner Rainey.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Commissioner Burks.
Present.
Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Present.
And present for Mayor Carroll. Okay, moving down, approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second. Any discussion, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, public hearing. Item 11A.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2017-01 PC, an ordinance of the Municipal Planning Commission of the City of Fairview, Tennessee to amend the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the RS-15 zoning district.
Okay, and if anybody is here to speak on the matter, you may come up to the podium. Please say your name and your address. Okay, if no one's going to speak on the matter, we'll close it. And if we'll go on to item 11B.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2017-30, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22, parcel 69.01, consisting of two acres located at 7170 Horn Tavern Road from a RS-40 low-density residential zoning district to a R-20 medium-density residential zoning district requested by Dolores June Lambert.
Okay, and if anybody's here to speak on the matter, you may go up to the podium. Please say your name and address. Yeah, like you can say anything. If you are opposed or for, you can come up and speak on the matter. No, 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 not yet. We may call you up when there's a vote, but there any citizens can come at a public hearing and voice their opinion or concerns. Okay, if no one's here to speak on that matter, we'll go ahead and close it, and that brings us to 4C, item 11C.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2017-31, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 42, parcel 63, consisting of 6.6 acres located on Fernville Road from a RS-40 low-density residential zoning district to a RM-12 zoning district requested by Tim Mangrum.
Okay, and if anybody's here to speak on that matter, may please come to the podium. Hi.
My name is Alice Carneal. I live at 7101 Fernville Springs Court. I am a member of the Board of the Homeowner Association, and I just wanted to make the commissioners aware that the plan that was submitted to the Board of Directors that we took to the homeowners of our community is a little different from what was planted, was presented to the planning committee. When we met with Tim Mangrum on September the 7th, he told us that he would be building approximately 30 townhomes, or but more likely 22 to 28. We took that to the homeowners' meeting on October the 14th, and the homeowners in that community voted to approve that by a vote of 11 to 4. Then I understand when he presented this to the planning committee, the proposal was for 40 townhomes and 18 apartments. We have several elderly people in that community, and the reason he presented this to us was because he would need to use our entrance for this development, and I don't think we would have approved this much additional traffic in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on the matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Yes, one more? Come on up.
You've got 11D.
I haven't. We're closing this public hearing. We still have one more. And so if this one talking about it was 11C that we were talking about, if we're done with that, then I'll close that one, and we'll proceed on. And I'm assuming we are, so 4D, which would be item 11D.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2017-32, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22, parcels 134.07, consisting of 8.34 acres located at 500 Highway 96 North from a RS-40 low-density residential zoning district to a R-20 medium-density residential zoning district requested by Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, and we'll open up the floor for 11D. If anybody would like to come up, please say your name and address.
I'm Amy Billensley.
Hi.
And Odell. It affect him too. We oppose this. I don't know why that everything has to be on that side of the area. We've asked some questions. Some of the answers we've gotten, I don't believe, are not available. So I know that the schools, for all this progression, can't keep up with it now. How is it going to be future? The middle schools are already running out of lunch by the time the eighth graders get to eat, and you know about the elementary school. I'm all for progression. I'm all for Habitat. I just don't understand why they're all in the same area. And, and what, I live in a cul-de-sac. Once this is done, they'll be putting streets to go through and all that, so I'm going to say no.
Thank you for sharing your.
Where did she live?
Did you say?
Fairfield Court.
Hello, how are you?
I also live in Fairfield Court, and I just think it's the planning of where we put certain things that make a huge impact over the course of time, and so I just really want us to think about what that's going to do, even if I'm not here. If the schools, all the lower-income kids are in one school versus another school, then we end up having something like a railroad track to the other side, that kind of thing. We don't want that in this town. I don't think any town needs that. I think we need support for Habitat for Humanity, but we need serious thought about planning.
Thank you.
I'm June Tucker, and I live at 450 Highway 96 North. So according to the map that I got with my letter, it looks like the entrance is coming right down my property line, so I was concerned about where the entrance to this is going to be. I'm also concerned about how many homes there'll be and if there'll be any kind of codes. There's, today I noticed going down 96, about three miles from my house, there's a home, and it's got, it has six cars in the front yard. It has a travel trailer and two boats in the front yard. So I was just concerned about what kind of restrictions there would be, but mainly it's my driveway and the access and how close these houses will be to us, because right now we're surrounded by the woods. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Wyatt. I live at 7513 Fairfield Court. I also am opposed to this. First of all, I appreciate you guys answering the questions that I sent to you guys earlier today, but based on some of those answers, it sounds like once this is probably passed and goes back to the planning board, we're pretty much at the mercy of whatever is decided, because there's, this development doesn't meet certain thresholds as far as buffer zones and things of that nature. So, to be quite frank, we probably would have had more, would have had more neighbors here tonight, but they pretty much have decided, you know, it's already a done deal, based on, well, first of all, only, I know only adjacent property owners are supposed to get letters from the city, but there was two of our neighbors that did not get a letter. So they kind of feel like, you know, for better or for worse, it's kind of a done deal. It's kind of in the bag. They weren't informed. The only reason I found out is kind of word of mouth. I had no idea this was something on the planning board agenda back in December. I was quite surprised to find out we're already at a second and final reading here at the Board of Commissioners tonight. So within a month period over the Christmas holiday, we're on the verge of, we're pretty much, some of us have lived in the neighborhood for close to 20 years, and we're now at the, you know, you know, we're almost to the point of being at the mercy of whatever the planning board decides with the developer on this property. I personally don't have any problem with Habitat for Humanity. I've built a couple of houses myself with them. I do agree, this half, this scatter-brained zoning of where we put different houses, we've put smaller houses next to bigger houses, does not make any sense to me. I think the City of Fairview needs to be more sensitive to existing neighborhoods when they decide to put stuff like this in next to them. I know that there's probably a couple of my neighbors that will probably decide to leave if this does go through, which I would hate to see. And like I said, I can't really think of anything else to say, but hopefully those are some good points to consider. Put yourself in our shoes. If this was happening to you, how would you feel about it? I think at the least, we should have, I mean, this is kind of being a good neighbor thing, but it would have been nice if somebody had came through the neighborhood, kind of explained what they were planning on doing, kind of showed us what they're planning on doing right now. We have no idea what they're going to do, because I've asked several times for even conceptual drawings of what's going to go on. Nothing is out there for us to look at or even consider. So, thanks for your time, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this property? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And that will take us to item five, citizens' comments. Do we have any? Okay, thank you. Item six, awards and recognition. We have anything tonight? Thank you. Item seven, public announcements, and it looks like we have an item under that. A, 2017 fiscal year ending audit presentation. So if y'all would, you want to give us a briefing, Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. As you're aware, the annual financial audit was prepared by auditors. That is required to be proposed and accepted by the Board of Commissioners. We have our auditor for you tonight to make that presentation.
Great, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to meet with you tonight. Looks like you've got a pretty full agenda, so I'll try to be brief. What I really would like to cover is actually just two different things. Our primary responsibility is, of course, the audit opinions, and we conduct the audit in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards, and it's one of those requirements of those standards is that we issue our opinions at the conclusion of the audit. Really, there are two of them. The first ones, pages one and two, and that's what we refer to as a financial, it's really a financial opinion. It basically, in very summarized form, says that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It's a clean opinion. It's the same type of opinion that you've gotten in the past. Our other opinion, and this is really because it's a city government, and one of the requirements of the city government is that we issue an opinion covering internal controls, compliance with laws and regulations, and other matters that could have a significant effect on the financial statements of the city. Now, this opinion is on pages 50 and 51. That opinion states, here again in very generalized form, that we didn't identify any significant deficiencies in internal control considered to be material weaknesses, or any other instances of non-compliance that were required to be reported. Those are our opinions on the financial statements. They're very similar to the ones that were issued in the prior year. I would like to point out just a couple of other items, and one is the management discussion and analysis. It's on pages three through nine. This is just a really good narrative overview of the financial statements, where you don't have to go through all the financial numbers and so forth. It basically just carries you through the report in a narrative form. It's a good thing to, really, to get an overview of the statements. I would also like to point out one really significant item that I feel is of interest probably to everyone, and that is, you've had another year where you've continued to add to your fund balance, to the tune of about $900,000. So it's looking, it's looking good. Now, it's roughly about, I think about 60% of expenditures. You were about three years ago somewhere in the neighborhood of 15% of expenditures, which is kind of the minimum that you would want to go as. So you're, it's looking very positive. Revenues were very similar to where they were last year. They were almost a carbon copy. I think the only difference was, oh, there was probably $8,000 difference. Expenditures, very similar to what they were. Those two together, it resulted in a $900,000 addition to your fund balance, which is, which is a good thing, no doubt about it. We've discussed, we had a few comments. We've discussed those with management. All of the points that we mentioned last year have basically been satisfied. There are two that we're still working on a little bit, and considering general fixed assets and internal control, which has already been taken care of. But that basically concludes my report. I'd be glad, if anybody has any questions about the report, I'd be glad to answer them, or if we could, but that concludes our report. We thank you.
Okay, does any of the commissioners or have any questions, board members? Thank you. Appreciate your report. Okay, and that'll bring us to eight, staff comments. Do we have any staff comments? Okay, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes, and since we have a consent agenda with the minutes in it, if I can get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion or changes? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11A, second and final reading of ordinance 2017-01 PC.
An ordinance of the Municipal Planning Commission of the City of Fairview, Tennessee to amend the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the RS-15 zoning district. Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
And a second, a first with the vice mayor, and second with Commissioner Burks. Any discussion? Okay, it'll be a roll call vote. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
And aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll go to 11B. Second and final reading of ordinance 2017-30.
An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22, parcel 69.01, consisting of two acres located at 7170 Horn Tavern Road from a RS-40 low-density residential zoning district to a R-20 medium-density residential zoning district requested by Dolores June Lambert. Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
Okay, and a second. So Vice Mayor Crutcher was first, and Commissioner Burks was second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
And aye. So motion pass. 11C, second and final reading of ordinance 2017-31.
An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 42, parcel 63, consisting of 6.6 acres located on Fernville Road from a RS-40 low-density residential zoning district to a RM-12 zoning district requested by Tim Mangrum, and Mr. Mangrum is present.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first. Any second? Okay, I'll second it for discussion. So basically, you heard what the citizens' complaint was about what they thought. Can you explain?
I would like to clarify a couple of things regarding that. The apartments, which is not part of Fernville Springs, it's, doesn't use that road. It's a totally separate entrance, or will be a totally separate entrance. So, of course, I didn't discuss that with them because that didn't pertain to their HOA. The other, when I, and I've explained this to my go-to person with the HOA last night, and we communicated, or I communicated with him to email this morning, but the 40 that I put on the application, I just, I done that here for, the main reason is, if you take 6.6 acres and times 12, which is the zoning, that gives me, that'd be 79 units. Even what I asked for was 58. I don't think 40 will fit on, when we take an acre and a half out of that for apartment purposes, that's going to leave me 5.1 acres. I don't think 40 will fit in there, and I've got an engineer already working on a design for that. I was hoping to maybe have a sketch before now, but it hasn't happened. So, the existing part of Fernville Springs is only about five acres, and we was only able to get 36 units on it. And it had existing road frontage that actually benefited us as far as maximizing the density. This has no existing road frontage. And as far as, I know another one of her comments was the traffic. Of course, the 18 apartments wouldn't affect the traffic internally in Fernville Springs, and at staff review, and I think it was even talked about at the planning commission for the rezoning, it may have been discussed here, its first reading is the city's want of having a second entrance. So I think with the second entrance coming out where the number two is on the furthest north left-hand corner of that plaque, that actually makes the traffic even better. It, all the traffic that's internally in Fernville Springs now that was going to 100, the people in the back, which is the new buildings we, just are building, they would most likely go out the other way, because it's just quicker and easier to go out than new entrance opposed to the existing.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Couple of questions, Mr. Mangrum. I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly what you're saying. So there's, there's going to be additional homes built in Fernville Springs, within Fernville Springs?
Yes, there's, there's four that's on the original plan that still has not been built.
And, and then there are some in addition to that that will be part of this parcel that's being rezoned?
Correct.
Okay. And, but, but those will actually be, would use the entrance, either the existing entrance for Fernville Springs, or potentially the second entrance that's been discussed at staff review?
The plan would be to connect the two.
Okay. The apartment component of this would not have any connectivity whatsoever to Fernville Springs. It would be with the existing apartments?
None. The apartment idea for this is if you look at the southern number two that's, that's on the plaque closest to Fernville Road, the most southern piece, that is the two acre, or the acre and a half that we would chop off of that that would have road frontage. I can't remember the footage. I would say it's about 300 foot of road frontage on Fernville Road.
And I thought I read somewhere, as part of the Fernville Springs portion of the project, that there will be, the asphalt, the existing asphalt will be capped off for the entire development?
Correct, and where the apartments, where we'd propose the apartments eventually be built, we would put a temporary construction entrance in there to access the new construction for the, what I'm going to call the second phase of Fernville Springs. That keeps the construction traffic from going through the development as it does now, and gets them on to a temporary entrance.
Thank you.
I don't really recall on the planning commission any mention of apartments. Was that presented? I mean, I know it was, you know, duplexes or townhomes.
It's been on my application from the get-go. So it was mentioned there. Like I said, we're, we're not trying to maximize the density, and I think there's a great demand for, for the senior-friendly housing that's in Fernville Springs, because since we've been back over there, we've, we've had some pretty good success with that. It was rather slow when, when we started that development in 2002, but it has, it's picked up quite a bit, and there's a great demand for that.
So obviously, this is a rezoning request, and anything final would have to go back in front of the planning commission. in front of the planning commission.
And just for the record, this was recommended for approval unanimously by the planning commission?
Okay. If there's any more discussions or questions for Mr. Mangrum? Unfortunately, at this point in time, you won't be able to. It's at the public hearing, I'm so sorry.
I tell you what, I tell you what I would like to do. If we could defer this for two weeks to the next meeting, I'd love to have another meeting with the HOA as a full board. I've asked for that, but I just have a one person I have to speak to, so.
Okay, I think that's a perfect idea.
It makes sense to clear up any kind of miscommunications if there, if that's what we're having here. So I'd move to defer to the next meeting.
Okay, we have a.
I withdraw my original motion.
And I'll withdraw mine and then you can make your motion.
Motion to defer to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. And we will go to a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye, and I want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
And my vote is aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that will take us to old business D. Second and final reading of ordinance 2017-32.
An ordinance to amend the city of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22 parcels 134.07 consisting of 8.34 acres located at 500 Highway 96 North from a RS 40 low density residential zoning district to a R 20 medium density residential zoning district requested by Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, and we have a representative here, if I can get a motion. Can I get a, does anybody want to make a motion? Okay. If we don't have a motion on the table, it will die for lack of motion. Okay, sorry. Item 11E, old business, second and final reading of ordinance 2018-01.
An ordinance to amend bill 2016-18 ordinance number 932 by revising the named safety director. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. That, we have a first by Vice Mayor Crutcher and a second by Commissioner Rainey. Any discussion? Okay, if that, no discussion, we'll go ahead and start with a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And then my vote's an aye. It passes, new business 12A. Appointment to seats, we have one tree board seat and as of time of the packet, we didn't have any applicants, is that correct? Okay, so we'll put that back on the next agenda. And item two, planning commission, and we still have the one applicant, was she able? Oh, there you go. So it's Ms. Qualls. Hello.
Hello.
If you just want to take a moment, introduce yourself, kind of tell us why you're interested in the planning commission?
Well, I've been wanting to get involved with the city of Fairview for a while. I've been selling real estate here for about 15 years now. And I've been living here now for a while and I, I've been trying to figure out where I would fit in and where I could do the most good. And I think this is, Mr. Mangrum suggested this is probably a good slot for, for me, being in the real estate business and so forth, so. And I've served on, elected, you know, I've, I've, I was an elected official in Hickman County several years ago, so I kind of know, kind of know the deal about the once a month meetings and so forth. And I'm willing to do that. So I thought it'd be good and I hope to be able to contribute to the city, learn a little bit along the way and be helpful.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Nominate Ms. Qualls.
Sorry.
Okay, we got a first.
Second.
Okay, and a second, we got Vice Mayor for the first and Commissioner Lucas is the second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Vice Mayor.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey. Commissioner Burks.
Nay.
And my vote is an aye. So the motion passed, thank you for wanting to serve and I'm sure somebody from the planning department will reach out to you and give you all the great information you'll need.
I look forward to it, thank you.
Okay, thank you for wanting to serve.
Mayor, if I may, before you call the next agenda item, I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion and exclude myself from the room as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That will leave us at resolution 01-18, a resolution calling a public hearing proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent approving a plan of service 7116 New Hope Road. Okay. If I, do we have a motion on the table? Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve this plan. If I can get a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? I know we got a new map. Is there?
Mayor, there's one item to discuss regarding this specific parcel regardless of, of the direction the board chooses tonight. When the discussions for this parcel originally were brought up, we, when we learned the location of the property, the discussions or questions were whether or not the property was contiguous to any other property within the city. Originally, we believed or had an idea that the property directly across the street was within the current city limits of the city of Fairview. The portion of New Hope Road that divides the two parcels is not, and it has not been annexed into the city. It is a county road. There's no issue legally with annexing property across the street from each other. If one parcel's in the city, the connectivity is contiguous regardless of if the roadway in between has been annexed or not. In this particular parcel, what we've learned is that it is not contiguous to any other parcel within the city. The actual parcel across the street is located within the corporate limits of the county, not within the corporate limits of the city. So for proper annexation of this property, you would require two actions. The first would be to annex the portion of New Hope Road that you see highlighted, which would then become part of the city and make this property contiguous to the city. So you'd have two items before you tonight. The first would be consideration of the annexation of New Hope Road itself, the roadway and the right-of-way. Second would be the consideration of the annexation of the subject property.
Okay, I just have a question. Why would we need to annex the road? I'm not sure I understand.
Again, this.
Well, it's for, for the reasons Mr. Collins just explained, we, there is no property contiguous to the subject property.
So that's it.
When we looked at it this morning, I mean, when the annexation laws changed in Tennessee two, three years ago, we did away with annexation by ordinance. You can annex property by consent, but it must be contiguous to other property in the city. And when we first looked at this and Mr. Collins and I spoke about it by phone today, I was looking at the map thinking, you'll see that parcel directly across from New, across New Hope Road. I don't know how many acres that is, looks like maybe 8.7 acres, I'm trying to read from a distance.
Are you discussing like that, what you're?
The little triangle parcel, yeah.
Okay.
1.7, I'm sorry. That, I assumed that was in the city, but it's not. I've, I've learned tonight from talking to the city planner that it is not, it is in the county. So being the fact, being that there is no property adjacent to the subject property that's in the city and no parcel directly across the corridor in the city, technically not contiguous. So that's problematic. And the only way that we can annex that property, in my opinion, would be to annex the portion of New Hope Road that is highlighted. Otherwise, you've just got a piece of property that's... There, there is some question in Tennessee law about whether or not you can, you can annex property that's separated only by a, a corridor, a road, a right-of-way. I, I think that the answer is you can, but it, it needs to be separated only by that road. And here, that's not, that's not the case. We've got one more, one more issue.
But it does touch city property, just, or is none, just at the beginning of the entrance of the road? Or?
I don't think it touches any city property currently, from what I can tell.
And Mayor, and when I was going over this, I asked our city planner to prepare this like this. A, because I'm colorblind, so she was nice enough to use colors I can see. And B, because trying to look at, I can't see the map up there very well. So I asked her to print it out and while she was doing it, she would go ahead and shade what was in the county, what was in the city, so we could look at it and see. So that's why we have this prepared today, just for the ease of me being able to see it and hopefully it's helpful to everyone else.
I would, I was going to say, I hope we do this all the time, this is much easier to see.
Because of the issue of it not being continuous, I, I wanted to make sure, that's why I wanted this printout to be able to see if it was or not. So the question becomes, do we annex this road, which we'll then have to go through and maintain and pave in order to make this annexation possible? Next question is, I don't believe this annexation of this road is technically before us today, is it? I mean, was it, who's made the request to annex this road? Commissioner Burks, in, in the instance of annexing a road, there would not be a requirement that there be a proposal or request to do that. The, under the law and under the code, you can annex a road that's a public right-of-way that you would be able to do without the consent or request, so to speak, in this case, the owner, which is the county. So if you choose to take that in, you can simply offer a motion, do that annexation and it simply becomes annexed as part of that process. Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure we're doing the right steps here.
Because as I'm understanding it, Commissioner Burks, I mean, you see Anglin Road, where, New Hope Road, where the arrow is drawn up there, where it intersects there with Anglin Road. If I'm understanding map, the, the portion of New Hope Road beyond, past Anglin Road is already in the city.
Which subdivision is that? Is that subdivision right there? Thank you.
So you already have a portion of New Hope Road in the city. You could, you could annex New Hope Road from where it's marked down beyond the subject property and I think that that would, that would eliminate any contiguous argument that you have that, that could be made against the annexation. Otherwise, you, you, you will be annexing the subject property and it will not be, it will not technically be touching any other property belonging to the city of Fairview, unless you annex the road.
Is the rest of New Hope after that point, is the rest of it in the city, to all around the loop?
I don't know the answer to that. I know, I, I've just been told that beyond Anglin it is in the city.
What is the condition of that road? I don't ever drive down it.
It's not super good.
So if we annex this road, is this a road that we would have to pave?
Yes.
And do some repairs on? How long is that stretch roughly?
Quarter of a mile, is it a quarter of a mile maybe? From, is it from 96 to Anglin?
Almost to 96. I'm going to guess just by some rough math on the parcels, you're probably looking at a quarter to a third of a mile.
We should be impressed, I got that close.
And I certainly was, I was.
I almost wanted to defer it just because the whole road issue until I could actually see it, you know? It's kind of hard visually, even though this map is gray, but I think I'm a little bit more confused now until I just lay my eyes on it. I don't know that. I know, because it looks like if we'd be annexing the road, none of the other properties are all in the county, so we'd be maintaining a road for one piece of land. But that's, road is a very confusing type situation. So I just think we would be better off, in my opinion. I would rather see us defer it, give us a chance to research it a little bit more. And I apologize, I didn't realize the road was in play, is that something?
Mayor, I think, sorry to interrupt, but I, I think in response to something that you just said, maybe the city planner can correct me, but some of the property touching New Hope Road is in the city. Is that right? Just not that triangle that's directly across from, I mean, so we've got parcel like maybe 21 and 18 that are circled there, those are, those are in the city.
Everything in blue is in the city. The only parcel that's not in the city is the 1.7 acre parcel directly across the street from the subject property.
That's right.
Effectively.
But then the subject property is just that one little, it looks like a crane to me, that will be in the county. Everything else around it is going to be county, because Yalla, Yalla is land in the county.
Nothing on that side of New Hope, I guess that's north, nothing on that side is in the city. Nothing, nothing surrounding the subject property.
I don't think deferring it will make the, the landscape around it any different.
Now, could you explain, is this a private home that's being built, just one, or do you know, did the?
There's an existing home on it currently.
And so they're just wanting to be annexed in? Yes.
Mayor, just for clarification, all of New Hope Road is just shy of a mile and from 96, the south portion where 96 and New Hope touches to, what's that road that's in?
Anglin.
Yeah, that's about four tenths of a mile.
Okay.
Almost half a mile. So basically we would be annexing in basically half of New Hope Road.
Annex one, so that we could get one house in, in the city. And how big is that piece of property?
Yeah, Commissioner Rainey, Commissioner Lucas, I mean, my opinion would have been that one option we could have done would have been to just annex the subject property and do nothing with the road, but for the fact. and do nothing with the road, but for the fact that I now know that the parcel directly across from it, the 1.7 acres, is not in the city. And that creates a problem, I think, because it's no longer as contiguous.
Well, and one of the things we've discussed in previous meetings is that we've had these little pieces of land that are in the city, and nothing around it is. And so we've had pockets, like on King Road, that we had pockets that were not, and I think this would create us a whole new pocket.
Okay. Did we have a motion? I'm sorry.
We had a motion, and I think I seconded the motion.
Oh, yeah, I do. Okay, that's what I was thinking, but it'd been a moment. You know, I would like to remove my motion and make, amend it to, we defer it till we can research it more.
Was there a motion to approve in the second?
Require Commissioner Burks to withdraw his motion and his second as well.
And just to be clear for tonight, this is just for the public, a set of public hearing, just so we're clear. It's not actually to approve the annexation, and after the, in the new process, just to clarify for myself, if, once we approve a public hearing, we'll set that, then it would go to the Planning Commission after that, to determine whether we're gonna give a positive recommendation or not. Then it comes back to the Board of Commissioners? It's kinda backwards now, it seems, but, okay. I'll withdraw my second.
It would come before the Board of Commissioners twice.
Okay. And then I would just like to make the motion to defer.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any other discussion? My vote is aye. Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
No.
Okay. And Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Okay. Motion dies? It's tied vote, it's a...
It's not deferred, so that means you have to once again ask if there's a motion to approve the request or not. And if there is no motion to approve the request, then it would die for lack of a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll make a motion to approve the request to set a public hearing.
Okay. We got a first?
And can I still ask a question, or are we, so...
Well, I probably, I have to do the, get a second, and then we'll have a discussion, if you don't mind.
I'll make a second then.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Going back to what Commissioner Burks said about the process, if the attorney is already telling us that we shouldn't do this, or not necessarily shouldn't do this, but it's not touching any other land, and that in order to do this, we're gonna have to annex in the road as well, and we already know that we may or may not want to annex in that road, if we already know we don't want to do that, then why are we wasting time with a public hearing and all of those things? Would be my only reason for not deferring it.
Any other discussion?
Clarification, Mayor. Did, did your motion, Commissioner Burks, include annexation of New Hope Road, or not just the subject property?
I think I just did the subject property.
I believe Commissioner Burks' motion was to offer a motion to approve the furtherance of the public hearing.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lucas was a second.
Yes. And this will just proceed at any point. I mean, you have a valid point, Commissioner Lucas, and I do, but I just really want time to go down the road, conduct, you know, check out the road, see normally if it's touching a property within the city. So that would be my only reason for wanting to proceed with it. Any other questions or discussion?
I guess I want to get some clarification. Just, I just want to be clear as mud on this, I guess. Mr. Potter, without annexing the road, your position is it would not be a legal annexation under the current statute?
That's, that's my position.
Okay.
Because it would not be contiguous with any other piece of property. You can make the argument that a parcel being annexed is contiguous if it's separated only by a corridor of some type from another piece of city property, but you can't really make that argument here.
Okay. So we would have to agree to annex this stretch of road, this almost half mile, four tenths of a mile, at which point that becomes city property, and therefore it's continuous at that point. But we'd have to annex four tenths of a mile in order to make this one property come into the city. Okay.
I just feel like we've done this before, like we've annexed off the rule of thumb if it connects to city property and the owner wants to come into the city. The road throws a kinker in it to me, but, you know, my gut is that it would have met the, you know, requirement that I would put me personally to consider it. So I just, like I said, I mean, we have another motion, but I think if we go through the process at any time, that, you know, this just keeps us moving for the property, and we can make any other decisions as we go, and then get to, get the citizens' input. Because with a public hearing, all the neighbors will have an opportunity to come in.
I tend to believe if the neighbors had wanted, they'd be here tonight in support of it.
They would, or wouldn't?
I think they would. I think we would have heard from them. We've, I think we've at least heard from neighbors saying they would like to, because that they would like to eventually have their land annexed into the city. And, you know, we had the, you know, we've talked about those pockets, and we're creating a huge pocket here with just this little piece of land. And I kinda agree with Commissioner Lucas. Why would we, you know, go ahead and use time when we're not real sure that we want to annex that road, or that one little piece of property into the city?
If we have any more discussion or comments? Okay, I'll go to a roll call vote.
What is, can you, what is the motion to approve for a public hearing?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can I, just to be even more clear, can I amend my motion, Mr. Potter, to include public hearing on annexing this property as well as this section of New Hope Road?
I'll second.
Thank you. That way, we're very clear on what we're voting on. All right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burks, roll call vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Okay. And I'm, Mayor Carroll's an aye. So, there we go. Okay, that will take us to 12C.
Shouldn't we get Vice Mayor back in?
Yeah, we'll let him come back in now. Ordinance 2018-02.
An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for Tax Map 42, parcel 77.08, consisting of five acres located at 7312 Taylor Road from a RS40 low-density residential zoning district to a R20 medium-density zoning district. Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first. Do we have a second? Okay. Commissioner Lucas, second it? Okay, any discussion? Mr. Mangrum's here, representing the property owner. If no discussion, we'll go to a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll is aye.
Thank you.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, to formally accept the Subdivision Improvement Association Levitt Meadows subdivision.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion? City staff, is there, I guess, recommendations, or...
It was, it was voted on by the Planning Commission several months ago to formally accept. They had, they've met all their requirements, and their maintenance bond had been in place for a year. They had the, the inspection done by the city engineer, and he was satisfied with the status of the improvement, so this is just the final step in the, in completing the, the process of closing out the subdivision, basically.
Okay. And we had a motion on the floor, correct? Okay, so if there's no more discussion, Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Okay. Was it Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Okay. My vote's aye. 12E, accept the 2017 fiscal year-end audit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
And my vote's aye. Motion carries. 13, City Managers, Items of Discussion.
Mayor, members of the commission, just one item for you tonight, is a reminder for Saturday, starting at 8:00 AM, we'll have the Focus on Fairview Community Meeting. We'll open the doors at 8:00 AM. We'll start the presentation at 8:30. We hope to have everyone out by 10:45. The first hour of the meeting will be kind of a review and understanding of the city's financials, the city's budget, and the city's cash position, as we are today. We'll take a quick break. The second hour will be a review and introduction to all of the city's various departments, functions, staffing, needs, all such as that. Again, we hope to get out by 10:45. We're gonna try and compress about a week's worth of work into two hours. We think we can do that, but the purpose of that is for our community to understand where we are, as we said in the email, our stakeholders, residents, community partners, to be able to come out and get an idea of how the city operates and where we exist today, and the staff's plans for 2018 as we move forward. We certainly appreciate everyone coming out. Again, it's not going to be televised or recorded. We want people to participate in the meeting and feel free and comfortable to do that. I think that's a healthy part of the process, is to be able to do that and kind of understand where we are, and fust at things they don't like, and, you know, it's not convenient to change it. So we look forward to the time. We appreciate everyone coming out, and thank you for all you do for the, for the community.
City Attorney, do you have anything else to add? Okay. And communication from the commissioners. Commissioner Rainey?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah, two quick things, Mayor. I want to also encourage everybody to come out to focus on Fairview. I think it's important, and I think we should make every attempt we can to be sure to be there. And then secondly, I want to say thank you to all the staff that worked so hard this week, cleaning off the roads and doing all that stuff. While the rest of us got to sleep, they were out at 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, taking care of the roads, and so I, I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's all tonight.
Commissioner Burks?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Lucas. Thank you to the city staff that was out working. Mr. Collins, I know you were up early as well with them, so appreciate the leadership.
Keith and his staff are the ones I'd think, I just got to watch. Those guys do a really good job with a really small staff, so they, they don't get the credit that they need to. So I learned a good bit from them, and I appreciate their letting me kind of tag along.
And I'm glad they did. I saw them all over the place, whether they were scraping, salting, whatever it was, we appreciate it. Appreciate everyone, what they did, fire police, everybody that was prepared to help and do what they needed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd also have to thank city staff, especially our Streets Department. I did have an opportunity to go in other parts of the county today and realize how much better our roads were, and it, for the first time, Williamson, the closure of Williamson County School is not because of Fairview, it's other parts of the county, so, you know, thank you, and to everything y'all do, that's y'all's time to shine, and y'all always, you know, do it. So I thank to all the guys that were out there, you know, working hard. I believe that's it, so if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.